Welcome, everybody. It is 6:30 on August 19th here in the end sadly. We have a motion to come over to me as you want. I seconded by you go, all this in favor. The Senate Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there's disagreement. We value the participation of our community. All participants, including those who are marginalized, marginalized communities, to be welcome and respected. We ask that our committee members, all who participate, to commit to these standards of support and respect. Our community will be going to walk-ins. Before we do that, I did, I wanted to address something. I've only been on the board for five years, but this is one of the incidents that happened that that happened to some of our town employees. It made me very upset and it made me sad, actually, of what happened. And for those of you who don't know, we had an incident down on Blades Road where we were, the DPW was painting some lines and local residents were so upset. They were yelling and screaming and one particular resident even mentioned that they might, that other residents might even have some firearms. It's a way to call the police. That's not the community that I thought we are. I mean, it makes me sad, if you think. Something like that could happen here, but it's a stark reminder. And rather than this, you know, public policy that we're talking about. But I want to let all of our town police know, we'll do everything we can to keep them safe and respect and honor our police for coming out to protect them and thank you for that. Again, to the town employees, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that you feel safe when you're on the job, that you feel safe when you come to work, care and respect, value, thank you and value your work. Everyone at DPW, everyone all over town. With that, we'll take in some walking. So anyone, you got here and then to that.
Before you go forward. Okay. I've never done a walk-in, so forgive me, I don't know proper pictures. Can I hand them to you?
Sure, you'll just say your name and your address and then, yeah, you can hand us that without our work and you go back. Thank you. All right.
My name is Kyle Warner. I'm side of 115 Blades Road. Hopefully, we'll find this to be the appropriate way to address an issue, which we wish. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with everyone on the flat board this evening regarding the new roadway markings that were installed in Blades Road, request to pay this causeway on August 13th, 2025. Part of these changes, the section of Blade Road function has unmarked charities near the street, put into any other specific that operate in practice at a single wave road, which naturally encourage slower vehicle speeds. Allow safety assistance by pedestrians, cyclists, students from Citrus High School, North Chester Street, or off-site orthontology for doctor's files. The stretch of roads, being wide, flat, and relatively quiet, has long served as a safe and dividing space for a range of recreational users. Bikers, including children, are able to ride the bikes, joggers, dog walkers, local families out of walking. However, the changes implemented on August 13th, specifically the addition of formal lane markings between approximately 99 Blades Road and 139 Blades Road, which is at the intersection of Tilden Avenue and Blades Road, have significantly altered how the road functions. Please refer to photo one, and you can see the markings added at the stall. As shown in the photos I've submitted, the southeastbound lane has shifted noticeably closer to residential properties, reducing the buffer between parked vehicles and through traffic and narrowing the shoulder space available for pedestrians. Photos 1A and 1B show you some examples of that. Since the new striping, many residents have observed to increase the vehicle speeds. Newly defined lane appears to give drivers the impression of a more formal, higher capacity roadway, which has made walking and biking to feel significantly less safe. In particular, production between 99 and 107 Blades Road are forced to step off payment on the narrow shoulders for going down through cars. Cars will not move over into the other lane of travel, as pictured in photo 2A. Regrettably, within four days of the markings being installed, a traffic accident occurred on Sunday morning. I personally am deeply concerned that if the conditions persist, more serious incidents involving pedestrians will follow. Additionally, many of the residents believe they were not notified in advance of this change. Many of us only became aware of it when the restriking work had already begun. When I spoke with the town administrator on August 13th, I informed him that the work of the Director of the Select Board, which is why I'm here today to address you. I would also like to raise concern about the placement of town speed monitoring device. I don't know the proper name for that, but there is a device out there that's monitoring speed. Currently is located at roughly 105 Blades Road, but is pointing southeast towards the heavily traffic stress commencement area is Causeway, which is an area where deputy beat access congestion in a row of parked cars in the street tends to naturally slow vehicles. However, once drivers pass the device, reach the newly marked section of Blades Road, their speeds tend to increase. Because of this, current speed data may not accurately reflect their reconfigured portion of the roadway. With this in mind, I'd like to respectfully request that this flat board consider the following. One is to add an agenda for the September 9th, 2025, flat board meeting, so that the residents have an option of voice of concerns over the situation. And the board can discuss and vote up potential adjustments to the roadway markings. And number two is to relocate the speed monitor device to the area between 107 Blades Road and Tilden Avenue to better capture the accurate data of the roadway changes occurring. This data would be guided to have a level of September 9 meeting. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak with you today. Appreciate your consideration of your concerns. If you have any questions about the photos or whatnot, I'm happy to pause and stay here for a minute, otherwise I'll quit your seat.
Right. Yeah, no, I mean, why, it's no more for debate, it's not on the agenda, so just, so that's great.
So should I give the pictures to you?
Please.
Thank you.
You too.
Would you like my notes? I have to pack them up quickly. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Strange to be inside of that table. My name is Bill Schmidt. I'm at 33 Egypt Beach Road.
And I'm Cleve Walton. I'm a neighbor. I'm at 6.
Thanks a lot for fitting us in on walk-in. We were negligent getting on the schedule, but certainly, I wanted to do really two things, kind of bring you up to speed on two things that we're working on, kind of a heads up. And then, you know, we'll, we'll, that's a follow-up on both of these issues that were, but less than five minutes to your time and bringing up speed. So as some of you who know or may not know, I just retired from FEMA after a long career with FEMA. And Paul and I are neighbors and all of us worked together for the AID, among many other things, that we both found ourselves looking for a transition from our careers at the same time. So anyway, we will be conducting a forum at the situat Public Library on September 2nd about disaster response and how it's changing and the current state of disaster response locally, nationally, and internationally. So a little bit about, you know, what I've done with FEMA, I was, you know, emergency response, I was on the IMAT team, I was a federal disaster recovery officer. So what I did was the A's with the states and towns and the other federal agencies in margin response. So we'll talk about, a little bit about, you know, the overview of how nationally those policies and procedures are going to be changing and what the possible impacts could be. And probably most importantly is what we can do as citizens, as a community, to try to make some positive impact on what we perceive to be our good gaps through what's going to happen in the next disaster. And the one thing, I'm about to turn over to Paul, I'll talk a little bit about the international piece of it, but what we're asking is the expansion of the word disaster in what we normally think of disaster, we think about hurricane or, but disaster really is anything that's definitively negatively impacting the community. So we'll talk about disaster response and A is associated with that response and what we can do locally in that state area. And then all will.
So my background is I've worked for about 30 years in the armed system, which I was, you would say, a first coordinator. Four, three years I joined at the height of the pandemic and saved people in 2023. So I worked actually on mental and physical health. And given the changes and things that the U.S. is no longer doing, good things, we will talk about the impact of that. And, you know, I work on a national level, I work with collective folks, formula's AID people, about 1,000 or so across the country. Probably also want to work in our local communities and talk to our local communities about what this means, what this should do. I have a second issue, which is that I'm very interested in the mental health of the town and surrounding the town. We have a motto in, or used to have a motto, at A, global to local. And so I was thinking, well, perhaps 70 years developing mental health programs in many countries. And I'm also a member of RER, Erika Service came to talk to us, the town's social worker. Eric described many of the good things that the town is doing, but also described that the need is greater than the supply of services. And I've seen the interest in the town, not only from Erika, but James came to Rotary meeting. James, I am a member of Rotary as well, we're taking this on as a local initiative. Freya has also reached out and she shared with me a report that Boston University had done on a survey of stakeholders and population capacity situated in here that's just become available. I guess to keep it short, two of the big things that come out of this is that both stakeholders, many of these, our social workers, people who serve out there, and the population, both very much agree that mental health is the biggest sub-issue facing with that. And so it's something that although we have mental health services, we need to do more. So it's just a heads up that I'm interested in working on this, I'm happy to volunteer for the town. I'm going to maintain and expand my connections in the town. One of the things that I think I can offer is that I have a long history of grant writing. And we know that we will need more resources. So I'm looking into using the data from the study and reaching out to you and others in the town to write grant proposals to get more funding, not just for situat, but for the three towns.
We're working our way by some connection to border health. So we are working our way through the border health and that crew over there too. And FAS is also very much involved and very supportive of, you know, what we're going to be doing for every meeting with that. So I give everybody else, since already we're not, we're not inferring that it's not getting done, we're just trying to help make it better. So it starts at the build coffee and donuts type of reception at 6:30, sir. And then it'll start promptly at 7:00. Paul and I will go for a half an hour each.
PM or PM?
PM, yeah. And then we'll do a question and answer period at the end. The town graciously offered to broadcast it, so we'll have people call in and it will be broadcast, so it should be an interesting meeting.
So we don't have any asks at the moment? So if it, if you get more about these issues, thanks for your time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get the feedback from that, you know, that forum and we'll talk to, you know, the town's people and then, you know, we'll dive into this mental health thing and then, you know, keep you up to date.
Thank you.
Yep. That is.
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot for the time. Thank you. Have a good night.
So it'll be the fourth time this year. Good evening. With a style of the weather, people quite know that Hurricane Erin is currently a category. Hurricane rain now winds about 5 miles an hour. We're going to expect to see a lot of direct impacts from Arizona the next couple of days. We have potential for currents over the next several days. Gusty winds Thursday into Friday up to 40 miles an hour. Just paying some wave impact, potential beach erosion. Kevin and I met with contractors, C-Wall project last week, we're going to go down there and make sure that's all buttoned up, just in case. So we're keeping an eye on it, we're not looking for any big impacts, but a good excuse to make sure your generators are working and all your hurricane preparations are in place. Water usage, stack factory bonds minus 2.5, last week we were minus 1. Reservoirs at minus 4.5, last week we were minus 8. Rainfall was .40, measured at the plant. Average daily demand was 1.798 million gallons per day, up from last week's 1.655. We're still doing the work on the United Americas contractors, the plumbing is done, we're just waiting right now again on the circuit boards to come in. The other ones taking those along now, special order, we expected those a long time ago and they're still not here. The town is in a tier two water ban. Outdoor watering with handheld hoses only between 4:9 a.m. and after 5:00. No use of underground irrigation, no washing of vehicles, carports for motorcyclists, no failure of pools, hot tubs, fish ponds. Life got staffing with students returning to school. Amar, last day has already ended, Egypt Beach, last day was last week. Mine, last day of lifeguard staffing is tomorrow. Peggy, last day staff will be Labor Day, 9/1. However, Peggy can potentially unstaff next Wednesday and Thursday, 8:27 and 8:28 based on staff availability. We will post notices in case that happens. Schools open early this year, so we'll be losing a couple of life guards for Wednesday and Thursday next week. For registration for recreation opens tomorrow night, August 20th at 6:00 p.m. Fall brochure is available on the town website. Please make sure your family account is set up and ready before registration starts. Recreation office will be open until 7 o'clock tomorrow night if you have any questions or concerns. By the biggest day at the town hall every year is this Friday, August 22nd, is Touch a Truck Day. This is a hugely popular event that runs from 9 a.m. to noon. There's free popcorn, there's water. The DPW have trucks of all shapes and sizes for the kids to sit on, climb on, jump on. Sorry, we do not let you blow the air horns, it's bad for the trucks and really while this, some of the people in the town hall, who you meet. But it is a fantastic event, so make sure you show up. Another police are going to have some vehicles here at the fire department, so we'll have tons of stuff for the kids to come on down to Truck Day. Please be mindful, the test courts at the high school will be closed for the remainder of the week through Sunday. Contractors are back to address a couple of concrete repairs in the back where the stands are and also finish up some punchless items at the complex that we'll be closing for the remainder of the week. In addition, we want to remind people that these courts are for tennis. We get a lot of complaints that there are bikers and particularly skateboarders on the tennis courts, that is really bad for the surface, so please stay off the tennis courts if you're not playing tennis. Pickleball, we just put the new pickleball courts up behind the old gates, so a lot of them. Especially the skateboarders, we need to stay off those tennis courts. Shaping the surface of those tennis courts. DPW update, Old Forge Road neighborhood, the water line stall still goes on. That is a raw water line from the well at the bottom of Old Forge that are on the new treatment plant. We're also replacing the existing water main and service lines to the homes in neighborhood. That's a seven month project. Once that is done, those trenches will probably sit over the winter and we'll pave that probably next year after they've had a chance to settle. Paving, roadwork milling of Jerica Road from Beaver Dam Road to Hadley, including the intersection of Beaver Dam, started yesterday and that is complete. Repaving of the roadway is currently scheduled for tomorrow, weather dependent. Please seek alternate routes when you're in that area, could experience short delays due to the work. Local traffic will be allowed in the works zone during the construction, while others will be detoured. The milling of Turner Road started today, will continue tomorrow. Tilden Road to Oceanside Drive, repaving of Tilden is scheduled for Thursday and Friday, again, weather dependent, so please be aware that Thursday, Friday, if you're in that area. The Saturday, August 23rd, Christian Elementary Park, another will be a situat bike rodeo, sponsored by the situat bike committee, situat recreation, situat police department, and Mass Bike. This is a free bike rodeo for kids ages 2 to 3 and ages 6 to 9. There are three separate sessions, 9 to 10, 10 to 11, and 11 to 12. Please contact the recreation department. Finally, the last thing I have once again is the food pantry. Continue to need assistance. The most needed items, canned meats, canned ham, artificial sweetness, pickles and olives, relish, canned sardines, canned salmon, canned clams, herbal and black teas, and canned sloppy joes. Think we dropped off the food pantry during operational hours. The bins behind the old gates, the situat library, Shaw's, all the village market. That's what I have full time.
If I can just make a note, Jim, if I'm correct, I think they expanded this bike rodeo to the grade 1 through 4.
Yeah, I didn't get that, but I believe that's correct. Marking them.
Thank you. Well said.
Are we getting fines for water violations yet?
If they see you watering, they can give you a warning generally, and then they get back and if it's still wet, they will give you a fine. Right now, they're doing warnings. We don't have anybody out early, early in the morning. The water situation gets worse, we will be crews in at 2 to 3 o'clock in the morning hours to look at people using their triplets systems.
Not early, I think 4 or 5 o'clock or 4:00.
Yeah, right now, we make a lot of money, but it's not in that situation for you to do that. We don't bring enough, don't bring enough fines to offset the overtime, we don't bring gas and stuff. But they do stop if they see some of water and they'll stop, they'll stop and give up the violation.
Okay.
One question on the paving that looks good around town, is there more besides what you talked about, is there additional paving that happened? No, then you're gone. So no more on block road?
No, block road was cut off very soon.
Okay, there were sections.
Yeah, there's sections that were cut off.
Go ahead.
Took me a second.
Yeah. Good, all right. Good. All right. Onto our schedule items. It's town heritage day, it's been a week out. Hey guys, how are you? Appreciate you giving us some time tonight, just wanted to come and just give you a real quick recap and this is thank yous. It was, Mother Nature was with us, it was wildly successful, we had a great turnout. I think that the new format of having Front Street open was fantastic. Vendors did really well, we kept a good space open for crowds to move through. The music festival and the, I'll call it the alcohol friendly area was, was very well received. I had a lot of families, if they were having a problem with it, many people thought that because there's so much space that we're able to access, have a, you know, an adult drink and not, you know, as one person said to me, last year it looked like a college bar. It was so packed. So we feel that the expansive, this, have a lot of open spaces, it's really, really welcome. We have a new food court and vendors did really well. And some of the vendors we spoke to, Front Street, some of them invested, have done. So, and I also talked to merchants, merchants did very well. I think having the bus stops at either end was good coverage for our merchants, because some are always on the fringe, so that was, that was helpful. She's wonderful. So, and entertainment was great, we had some, you know, there were a lot of people came up and said, where's the rise? And I explained, you know, we really tried to bring it back to the old fashioned sentiment of a free event as much as we can, so that was very successful, I think that's been a cheer. Any, I'm missing, you want to lay?
Just talking about the vendors, many of them, a good handful of them couldn't come back on Sunday because they said they'd have on Saturday.
Yeah.
They're probably not.
Yeah, so it was, it was, it was a very, it was a success, so I just wanted to let you guys know, question, it was a success. There's a lot of thank yous, I mean, I, you know, I'm going to go through real quick, but I do think it's nice to recognize a lot of the folks that put this together. Sorry to the Harvard master helping us, you know, organize the boat parade, that was wildly successful this year. I mean, people really got into it, it was really nice. Unfortunately, the weather calmed down because it was an oyster in the morning and flattened out, so it was, it was perfect. And they also organized the duck drop, which was a, was a really cool event that the Harvard merchants organized. DPW, I can't say enough about them, they were amazing in every way. I mean, they kept the area clean, they were very transparent communication of what was going on. So hats off to Kevin, his team, they were fantastic. I don't think they get enough credit, but the event doesn't work sometimes without them, so kudos to them. Also, you know, border health and fire department, you know, when they do their job, it seems like they don't do their job, but they did a fantastic job, so, you know, there's some folks that did have some things that they, you know, came through and border health was, we had great communication with each other on, you know, who was coming, so, and that had an awful lot of, you know, issues. You don't want to have this, you know, Saturday morning. So she was very communicative to me about what people needed, so I went back to the vendors and headed some things out before that day. Police department, I can't say enough about Dee Thompson and his team and all the officer buildings, they were amazing. There's some things we had to pivot with crowd control and getting vendors out and doing some different things, and they were amazing, we made great communication. So, you know, I think, you know, we so much get a bad rap, but we have a fantastic department in this town, so people should know that. I have to also, you know, thank the town administration department, Jim and his team, you know, Michelle, Sheri, and Jen, Sheri's over there, they kept me on track with, you know, the permitting, I appreciate that. And I think, you know, there's a huge thanks to Jim because Front Street wouldn't have happened without his creativity and pivoting and finding, you know, an alternative solution for the roadway area, so I really appreciate that, Jim, that, that really helped us come through and meet our vision, so thank you on that, appreciate that. Lastly, our sponsors and our business partners, I mean, obviously, you know, I've said to you before, this is a free event, we want to keep it as free as we can. Many of these events are ticketed, ours is not, and that's because of our sponsors and our business partners. You know, Reboot Package, General Store, and Total Brewery, they helped us, not only as a vendor, but they also did a lot of heavy lifting with organizing and putting things together for us, they were, they were fantastic partners. I can't, I also have to thank EBC, their guidance and help in supporting us, they were, they were instrumental in helping us, you know, finance behind us, that, that was huge. And obviously, our volunteers, our chamber board, you know, we have a great group of people, a great group of volunteers that really put this together. And, you know, we have to remind people sometimes, we're our volunteers, can you do this, so just take your breath with me, so. But we had a really good group of people that put together a really good, really good festival. We were very picking on the vendors we chose this year, and I think that showed, I think that's why the vendors were successful, because, you know, even though the weather is nice, people aren't going to waste them on, and I think people felt that we had a good choice. And I do have to appreciate, thank my wife for putting up with me for the months of June, July, she kind of lost it in the middle of this, like, I do have to thank her publicly for all. But, yeah, we just wanted to, you know, you know, take a group's work in the town and, you know, the previous people that have done this, that have come before us, that they have, you know, built quite a, you know, quite a brand heritage stage that people look forward to every year, so we should thank you, we're happy for us as well. Before I open it up for any questions right now, I guess I just, I want to say thank you, it's, you'd be surprised, maybe you're not, you'd be surprised, hundreds of folks come up to, very a lot of us say, we should do this for heritage days, we should do that for, yeah, it's not our head, it's our town's thing. But there's a purpose to it. I'm only stating for myself, but I've always been much more concerned to make sure that the, their local merchants are successful, opposed to the, I want the vendors to go, but I really care about the merchants. And, and I want to say thank you for listening to that, having a great kind of mix, make sure that it's a fun event, and vendors are not, they're complimentary. At the end of the day, you basically, those local merchants who are part of all this people, because, yeah, I mean, they are the greatest town. merchants who are part of all this, because, I mean, they are the greatest town, so, that's why, that's why Front Street is important.
Front Street is important, and also the drop off spots were critically important to the past four years. Heritage, all the forces to stay the year for me, weekend for the year for us, but because of the drop off at the pier and at the upstream, they walked the whole beautiful harbor and stopped at Joy, and stopped at Salt Cape, and stopped everywhere else.
Yeah, and Joy sent you a lot of travel, so that's good. And the music was good. It was. I'll, I'll, you know, screw this way, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I was there Saturday, and I started my experience, taking the bus ride from high school, being dropped off down to Almere, and I did walk. The idea of the one booths layout, because I'm familiar with the old school where we had it too, was brilliant. And it allowed for everybody to move and not feel crowded, not feel claustrophobic. It did invite people into the retailers with permanent structures as well. Then I enjoyed the music, I thought, and even the access into those areas and getting in and getting out, you didn't feel packed, you didn't feel crowded. Do you have any idea what your attendance was?
We think it was around fifteen thousand, based on some aerial footage that we had, so.
So my compliments to everybody, town, chamber, vendors, and even the bus drivers were, were excellent.
Yeah, so, yeah, they're great, they're no good either. There's a company, we try to use as much as we can, even the sanitation, everything.
So my compliments, it really was quite a success, I was very impressed.
It was amazing, and I have heard nothing but compliments, um, flow, food, everything, so, thank you, love, and we'll be next year.
I think you guys did a good job, I had so much fun Saturday, I can congratulate you.
Sorry to be kind, Indian food.
I am, I wasn't going to ask you to be negative.
I know.
Negative, something to think about next year.
Maybe next year, maybe somebody will open a Indian food restaurant for us.
We also had the, the community booths for the first time this year, where we allowed the.
Yeah, it was part of that, and I'm not talking, that was it.
Was that good, did you enjoy that?
Uh, yeah, it was.
Better, I tried organizing, I'm not sure I know who's paying us there, but, but first try, so.
Whatever, we laughed.
Yeah, but I think that's important, I think that's one of the things we want to do, is have community presence, it invokes an opportunity to do their stuff.
I thought it was an excellent event, I was there Saturday for a good chunk, I was there Sunday again for a shorter period of time. I, I love the one, one line of vendors on Front Street, the only comment I might have to think about, and I don't know if there's a good improvement here or not, but to consider the fact that all the public space is one direction, so the west side of Front Street was getting probably a little less walk-through traffic than the east side of Front Street, just something to think about. But I did really, really like that flow, and I loved the extra space for pedestrians there, I thought the way that it was set up and the length and the, to the buses was great. I really liked the Otis, the community alley, I thought that was excellent, and really brought attention to a lot of the nonprofits now, putting them in a space together, interacting in a really nice walk-through area where pretty much everybody was going to go one way or another, was great for, for our local organizations, so I thought that was really great. And just to top the bottom, I mean, yeah, the weather was perfect, so you couldn't ask for a better weekend, but I, I also, you know, having served on the chamber, having been involved with Heritage Days for many years, it's not easy to pull off, and, and right, it's not our event, it's the chamber's event, and you guys had your own challenges. What do you think of the event, logistically, but just structurally within the chamber as well, so you guys had a great team, pulled off a big list, and did it very well, so.
Thank you. And I will add one more thing, that, that, you know, police, there were no incidents or issues, everyone was, you know, in a great mood, very fun people, so there was not many October grand hour or anything like that, it was just a, you know, even some of the police were helping some of the vendors, it was really, it was what we want at Heritage Days, so I think it lived up to the spirit, so, so thank you for having us tonight, I love it.
Saturday twenty-six.
Yeah, well, we're at least, we're at rest, we're planning stuff.
We've already started planning.
And are you both people? How many years now have you been with the? The fifty-seven. Fifty-seven. Yeah, thank you, sir. Well done. Thank you. Speaking of businesses and work situation, what a, what a segue that was, I think.
Ryan.
Ryan, whoever, there's Ryan.
Hey, guys, how's everybody doing?
Doing well, well, everyone keeps asking, when is Situate Split Rock going to be open? What is the deal, Ryan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty happy to report, we are, we are very, very close. So we finished construction last week, we got our building approval from the town yesterday, and our Board of Health approval today, so we are officially greenlit to, to open up. We're going to do a small, soft opening with some of our contractors and family tomorrow, start to work out the kinks with the, the goal on next week being our kind of formal grand opening to the, to the public, so, very, very close, exciting.
That was the, the layout question, so well done. All right, so tell us what we're doing, we're talking about the, what's breaking here.
Yeah.
The, we're talking about the expansion of, expansion of hours, talk a little bit more about this, so folks, can I understand, talking about a little bit earlier, we're Sundays and Mondays.
Just for one, two days.
Just for the two days.
Except for.
Yeah.
Yes, let's.
That's right, yep. Sure, yeah, we're seeking approval to just try something out, we've never done it at our, our other location before, but just figured it would be something worthwhile, especially given the, the additional availability of our liquor license to do cocktails in Situate, we thought we would try a brunch scenario for a couple of days this fall and see how it works out, so we're seeking to open up a couple hours early on a Saturday and a Sunday in September when the, the weather's great and it's a little bit cooler, to open at ten AM instead of our standard twelve PM opening time, and we'll do some breakfast and coffee and Bloody Marys and mimosas and a little waffle bar for kids, so something just a little bit fun in the mornings to, to test out and really just see if it, if it works for us, if it works for the town, see what kind of business it drives, and, you know, obviously, it's, it's a little bit outside of our standard operating hours, so wanted to come and chat with the select board and, and see if it makes sense for, for everybody else.
My, my main question is, this is essentially a test run for just two specific days this September of twenty-five, correct?
That's correct, yes, Saturday the thirteenth and Sunday the fourteenth of September, opening at ten AM instead of our traditional twelve PM start.
And, and so, follow to that question, hopefully, September is as beautiful as Heritage Days weekend was, if you were to ask for a two-day test period and you end up with the first hurricane at the east coast, is your backup plan to just wait for point twenty-six to test out the area?
Most likely, yeah, that, that's actually why we requested two days, in case we happen to get weather on one day, we can at least try it one of the two weekend days, so, yeah, there's no plans to try to swap out dates to another weekend necessarily at this point.
And, and being a new member of the board, the other question I have maybe for board is, well, for health, do we have sort of a precedent for, we have brunch in the harbor, so.
It's already sort of, it's a precedent. Right, it's a special, they say it happens today or something.
Those, those already existed.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah. Now, now we have it in the harbor, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Noticing that wasn't missing something, but it's all happening. I know, I think it's great. You're good.
I think it's great, no questions, everything's clear and all happening.
Do you need a motion? I think we do. Motion to extend early opening hours commencing at ten AM on both Saturday, September thirteenth, and Sunday, September fourteenth, for the Split Rock, Situate Split Rock Facility at three sixty Gaia Road in North Situate.
Mr. Gormore, second line, Nico, all in favor, all unanimous.
Great, thank you very much.
On the thirteenth. Look forward to it.
Thirteenth, hope to see you there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tim, have a good night.
Thank you. All right, we have a lot of boards and committees, a lot of interviews, we're on the second year, yeah, Situate, we think, we'll call up first, we have Della, Shepherd, beautification.
How are you? I'm fine.
Well, my, I feel that was not my favorite committee, but it is, I have a lot of, it's a dynamite group. It's awesome. They had so much energy, anyway, so, tell us, I usually ask some of the same questions, kind of find out, why are you interested in this kind of committee, and we'll, we'll open it up, so it's more like, what kind of major you want to join and?
Well, I've lived here for a long time, and as we all know, it's a beautiful place, and I have finally reached the point in my life when I can help keep it that way, and I'm interested in beautifying the public places, the gardens and all that, and picking up trash, which I do, but I'm also interested in protecting the natural environment, in protecting and restoring these natural places, the salt marshes, and wetlands, and the dunes, and so much of which have been lost, so. The ladies on the beautification team are interested in protecting these natural spaces, and they're, they've said I might be able to even support me in building rain gardens, which would fill the runoff into these wetlands and the salt marshes, so I was excited to join with the, and I hope to build some rain gardens.
All right, so I'll, I'll open it up, some questions.
I think it's terrific, I appreciate your willingness to step forward and compliment this already great committee, so, commission.
You're a great candidate, man. I appreciate your enthusiasm for rain gardens.
Yes. You're the rain, the rain garden, you can do something about that.
Do we need permits for rain gardens?
Sure we do.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't, and we, the beautification commission is part of the conservation commission or the conservation, we're not a time just. Yeah, we go by the law.
I mean, Tom, we're pretty in luck, what I, I'm like, did he drink?
All right, so, so to check, then, just whatever they can come for, you know, it's reasonable.
I would like to have blueberries in some of my rain gardens, then they could be food gardens, for wildlife, and for people, children to go for, so, they could be a big.
I think it's great, I sound like a great candidate, I actually sat down with Susan and Siska and Mary last week to chat about the current efforts, and I'm going to be on to the committee, and I'm very excited about some of their plans, I think if they, if they asked for one thing, it would be more help, more volunteers, and more hands, so I think it's one of the floor, and I look forward to more, hearing more about the rain garden options. So this is great.
So you're all set with me?
We're, that's it. I love it, thank you so much.
All right, feel free to come back here anytime you want.
Oh, I will.
All right, Mr. McGuire, looking for, for our bike committee. Yep, don't worry.
Great, how are you?
Thanks, let's see. So, why now?
Yeah, so I've been a cyclist since two thousand and eleven, and have really gotten into it pretty diehard in the last five years, and I'm very impressed with the cycling changes we've made in town, with the expansion of a bike lane, with Chevrons on the road, the new recent motors, four-foot sign, and I ride, I'm out, I ride outside at least three or four days a week, very early in the morning, and I feel like there's definitely room for improvement for cyclist education and for driver education also. I think cyclists get a bad rap sometimes for the way they ride, and people are ready, I think that that, I think cyclist knowledge can be improved, and I also think, you know, the two biggest things I see, I mean, whether this will be fixed or not, when I ride, are people don't use their blinker, and people don't stop at stop signs, but I also see cyclists that ride at five, five across the road.
If you could fix that.
No, you're.
Well, if you can get them all to fuck in, that would be great.
I also see cyclists that ride at five across the road, don't know how to use proper hand signals, don't signal when they're supposed to, and I think from just my experience in riding, I can help, hopefully, maybe I have more of a priority to teach cyclists to do that, so.
Check your chase, just keep it honest, dude. Lot of, so, questions, so kind of any concerns, and we have a free sheet for the food here.
Ten thousand miles a year is very impressive.
I, I think it's great, I'm actually, I'm just cycling, am I going to?
Well, I'm going to.
You look at you.
Every comment I have, I like them.
So, so, I, I, I fully support it, I'm also a big road rider, and I think that the bike committee is doing a very good job, I think there is room to grow, one of their chief goals this year is to talk about safe access to schools for, for people of all ages, but really safe access for people riding around town. They're really working on that education component, they're working on the new bike repair stations they're going to put in shortly, so, so I think it's great, anybody that's got a lot of experience cycling, that can catch that database and knowledge is a great thing.
Awesome. Long story. But, you're good. Thank you, I mean, yeah, awesome, all right, appreciate your time, thank you. All right, and so we got two more, so, oh, I'm, oh, more. Yeah, so Coleman, Barbara Smith, and.
Matthew Chen.
Matthew Chen, there you go.
Don, Don, and.
All right.
Both the same name.
Sure, yeah, come on, all right. All right, Coleman, so you're looking at mainly zoning board, but they're also going to do the portal house and stuff, is that?
Right.
Okay, want to make sure. So, same questions for both, kind of the why now, and, yeah, what kind of reflection you're studying, or is, I just like the why now, because there's like this issue or something that popped up, or it's, so, let's try it.
We started, yeah, I'll try and be, but, why now, so, I'm still in school at B C Law, I got a chance this past spring to take a couple of classes relating to municipal government, and I sort of developed a, a real interest in local government, especially how administrative law factors into local government. I thought, I sort of toyed with the idea of running for board, like, I guess, relating to land use specifically, because I guess, this isn't, this isn't like a new incident, like you sort of mentioned, but I do think that, I think that there's a, a lot of progress in Situate's already made relating, relating to land use, relating to, I guess, multifamily housing, and maybe doesn't get it for a while, but I do want to, I tip my hand maybe by applying for both, but they put one for the, the zoning board appeals, and I don't know if you agree with that, by board appeal to zoning board, but I'm actually not saying that.
Yeah.
Um, wouldn't be going into that with that agenda, you know, like, I view it as sort of applying to general bylaw and the zoning bylaw, and more, more non-discretionary than I, I would be proud to work on either of these boards, and. And I don't know, just, just viewing some of the the meetings of this board, the planning board, the zoning board, of the Z V A on YouTube, I've been able to see that it really is all about administrative law. It's all about, okay, does my board have the authority to handle this issue? Or is it something that we need to tell the applicant, that they need to come up with? Confidation, D P W, or do I not have the authorization? And that, that sort of stuff is what that's going to give up municipal.
Okay, that's. Yeah, let's, yeah, we'll bring in more questions. That's pretty good.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, select board members. I appreciate your time and consideration. First, to answer your initial question, why now? I've been in town for five years. I grew up on South Shore. The only times I've left for college and graduate school, but now that I've officially determined this is going to be my home, we've got two kids, and I've come out of the five-year whirlwind of having two toddlers, and now that we are setting down roots here and going to the future. I think now is the time, I really want to get that involved with, with local government. See from my resume and from my cover letter that I sent, I do have a history of public service. That'd be first and foremost why I'm interested in this, in this role, is to serve the public. I've been in practice as an attorney for ten years, one year in the state of Washington, nine here in Massachusetts. I am a sole practitioner. I dedicate most of my practice to engaging public defense for court-appointed individuals who can't afford their own orders. Prior to that, I was an assistant district attorney here in Plymouth County. I did that for four years. Started juvenile court, made my way to becoming the district attorney of Hingham District Board, and then Brockton District Court. After that, I spent two years in our game unit, brought in prosecuting crimes there. And from a public service standpoint, I really got a lot from that, being able to be with all kinds of people from the public, members of the police, obviously, members of the public who are victims, are witnesses. And having grown up in Plymouth County, and then having seen all walks of life all throughout the county, it made me want to dedicate the majority of my practice to some sort of public service. So I've been doing that for the last ten years, and this is an opportunity for me to get into some sort of public service that's outside of the criminal defense realm, and to give back to my community. I would say from an intellectual standpoint, I'm also drawn to this role because it involves what I would suggest is a quasi judicial board, someone who is mediating between parties. They're obviously there for an appeal because a decision was made that was not in homeowner or business owner's favor, or in their, in their interests, and you're there as someone to maybe between that. So I think if I were unable to serve on that role, being able to balance all of the interests that are involved in that, the community interest, homeowner's interest, or property owner's interest, the community interest from an environmental standpoint, any other governing board that we have here in Situate, and collecting all that together and deciding how much weight to afford all of those things is something that intellectually I'm very drawn to. I've done over a hundred and fifty of entry hearings in districts in Spiritport, Mayor of Massachusetts. Tried to present that case to trial, so I have an experience with court decorum, making sure that parties are respected throughout the process, and that everyone is insured at their judicial process. And I think that's the way that we can ensure public trust through the Z V A. That's something that I would try to bring my experience to. I'm not a land use lawyer per se, but I have spent last week reading our zoning bylaws three or four times, and watching a lot of the hearings on YouTube to try to familiarize myself with some of the legal standards for what would apply. Obviously, I would leave unprecedented than the other zoning board members, in having those discussions in between the hearings to review all that evidence and come to an analytical decision that I think would serve the community best, and then make sure that the process is done very fairly, make sure that the parties all think that they have a fair shot. So those are my kind of two full areas for why I'm drawn to this town from a public service and intellectual standpoint. From a personal standpoint, my father is on the zoning board in Quincy. He's been on it for about fifteen years. I find myself having a lot of conversations with him about what's going on in Quincy, where he lives. And he's found it to be very invigorating. He's found it to be very rewarding from a public service standpoint. Then my father-in-law is the retired building inspector in the town of Colasset. He actually does the weight and measures here for the town of Situate. So I oftentimes find myself talking to him a lot about local development and things like that as well from a personal standpoint. So that would be kind of my overview for why I'm interested in this board.
A little bit about, go to our liaison first, but before that, I want to say these are what we call wonderful problems to have. We have two amazing people who are just awesome, and we have to choose. Again, that's a good problem to have. Thank you both for taking the floor. It's great, anyway.
Yeah, I appreciate, I would say the same thing. I really appreciate both your interest in this. It's usually a board that's heartfelt, because it is a lot of work, like they meet monthly, and there's homework, right? So like the board members actually make the right decisions. So it's, it's a, it's a rewarding committee. I actually served on the committee for three years, so it's definitely rewarding. And I appreciate your interest, and I appreciate what you've said about, you know, because most of, the folks that are there are, usually there's a party that's happy. There's a party that's happy or not, everyone seems not happy at the time. Because you have to tell them what they cannot do. So it is good to be able to work with competing interests as well. So I appreciate both of you and your interest in, in starting on the Z V A. I guess, I guess my one, my, and then this is an alternate position. So we have a five, and I'm saying this just because every town's different as to how many on the Z V A. There are three voting members and two alternates. And the way the Z V A in Situate is run is that every, every single meeting, all five vote, just in case one has to then later refuse the votes. They always have five vote, five, and five still participate in writing decisions. Don't worry, you will still be able to write decisions. Well, otherwise, it's difficult. We won't want to split them by three. So I, I did want to make sure that you're clear on that. And then I guess I just don't really have a question. I just like appreciate your interest. I just wanted to make sure you that sort of, and I appreciate you.
Do you have any other questions here?
To key on your, we, we do have a dilemma here. It's not a dilemma, but two really great candidates. One position available with Z V A, and position available on affordable housing trust. So the affordable housing trust, which you have expressed interest in, would that be okay for you?
Yeah.
Because then we could place both, and the town wins a hundred percent. And what have you done in the affordable housing trust side of things, affordable housing in your study and your pursuits?
Well, so, yeah, I I don't want to make, I don't want to reopen an issue that may have just been closed, but I think that my experience sort of prepares me more for the Z V A than for the affordable housing trust. I, I saw that there was a vacancy and figured I do like experiencing this, but I, I support the mission of doing what City of Can, to make sure that there's legally existing affordable housing. So, so sorry, not a lot of experience there, or hard settles there, but I'll do it. Only, only as it would be corollary to the same agenda of studying the rest of the Z V A.
And that's a three member, right, we appoint three members under the affordable housing trust. And then there's also the liaison, as well, it's more stepping down for being a coordinator, so issues.
I've got a lot of work coming up.
They have enough members to continue.
They do.
Yeah, they have had enough.
But I mean, that could be a follow-up if you want. Right. To look into that more if there's interest or if not.
Well, you're going anywhere.
That's good. Thank you. I appreciate your willingness to do that. It's a very important group. And they have a lot of work coming.
And that was going to be my point, is that, is that I think you guys are both great candidates, and I always appreciate that anybody who's willing to step up and commit to serving the town, just but anyway, especially on a lengthy basis. But the affordable housing authorities is going to have a lot of work coming its way, and I don't think, I don't think we want to be in a position of shortage of members or a tight group. I'd rather, I'd rather see it a full, full room. And for somebody who's eager to learn and who's eager to approach a new topic, I appreciate the honesty and the experience level. Given that I'm sort of in my third month as select board member, you're always learning, you're learning fast. But as long as you're honest and you're willing to go over the sleeves and listen, I don't think that's a problem. That takes advantage to have fresh eyes, so. I think that might actually be a good spot for you, but I think both are qualified to help the town in all respects.
That's it. Alright, yes, my cover letter. This is, it's great, thank you. Coleman.
Thank you, and your book, thank you for your contribution.
We have five seats. How are we going to do this?
Oh, and you have one, Chris, you're on, and I believe you can spell him, it's also on.
We have a chair. We do have a chair. Alright, so. So coastal advisory folks, we got Dan who's on there, Mark Carr, this is Rowley, Liz, and Chris. On top. You want some, just recording against our.
I know, Corey's got to go. I want to see if we could just get a little bit of clarity on who the current members of the committee are, because when you're giving the charge and the current makeup versus the revolved function of the board, I want to make sure that we have some clarity on what positions in the charge are currently filled versus what positions are actually available. I know that the staff has done a great job of trying to dig into it, so I wanted your take on it, Corey, before we.
Yeah, yeah, so sharing a set down, we're going to talk about it too, that the current charge that is picture needs to be a couple of coastal residents, one being a resident technical and wide you resident, but has special expertise in you know, coastal issues, as well as somebody that represents the business community. And then two representatives from coastal management, which is a state agency, and they've never actually been to the coastal advisory commission meetings. So, and they don't live in town, and they're, you know, a state agency, so I'm kind of thinking that maybe at some point we could revise the charge and maybe eliminate the coastal government, because, you know, the state people and replace those people who are residents, city residents. And seeing as how there's a lot of candidates here, I think we might be able to do that.
Who are the current members?
Who are?
So there's.
I know, like Kevin Capery's listed, but that would be a.
He has, he talked about a D P W.
That's a D P W, that's a lot.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's emergency management director, and you can learn. Mark, Kevin, and myself. So we're the town people. And the rest of the existing members are coastal residents, or one might be an inland resident, I'm not sure, but I think there are two coastal residents.
Alright, so we're looking for, so essentially what we're putting this open is one tactical and one business community. This is such a unique.
Mr. Trevor, you got one coastal resident, you need one tactical resident, you need one business community.
So it's a one.
But can I remind us of like, the board, the select board creates the track, and then we can modify the charge? We don't think it's board local.
I just want some clarity, so that we understood where you're coming from. Yeah, no, that's, that answers my question.
Very good, thank you. I appreciate it.
They have the two C Z, you know, two members from C Z M that can work for them, work with this board, so it would be better to increase them.
Yeah, it's the guidance of what, thanks for that, that would be, so. Sorry for the delay. It's just as you could, more uniquely written than the bike committee, those people. We have that bicycle.
You know how many positions you've covered?
Three, 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 we have five folks here tonight. Alright. So we'll, we'll go down the lines here. And also, Dane, we were brought up in why now, and also.
My name is Elizabeth Prowley. I live in Indian Crescent Avenue on Second Cliff here in Situate. And why now is because I got the E deal from the town, and it said they were looking for a coastal resident. I thought, oh, who's going to sign up for this? So I sent in my name. I mean, honestly, it's hard to get people to sign, but but I studied marine affairs at the University of Rhode Island. I have a B S in marine affairs. And I have a master's degree in education, so I feel like I work well with others, and that's.
We'll find out.
And we'll, we'll have questions all the way down the line.
My name's Mark Curran, Southern Van Hill Road. My wife and I have lived in Situate for thirty-two years. I grew up in Newburyport, so I grew up in a coastal community. I've lived here longer than I did in Newburyport. Why now? Kind of a convergence. I retired two years ago, so that's part of the why. I have, I have available time. I didn't have a full. My career was in coastal issues. I worked for the Tama Memorial Institute thirty-seven years. Previously located in Ducksbury, moved to Norwell about ten years ago, I would say. And my whole career was, was dealing with coastal issues. I also worked five years as the chief of the coastal management branch of E P A down in D C. My main focus there was managing the national history project. So for example, Massachusetts Bay Program is one of the twenty-eight national history programs. And I also been lighting a R I S.
Go random.
You are actually. You mask over his jacket.
Okay, yes, I'm next. I'd say my name is Liz Charlton. I'm a Realtor here in town. And I've been with Jack Conway since a great long time, nineteen ninety-six. He was a friend of my dad's, and he got me into getting my real estate license to get that car. At any rate, so I know the beach as well. I know this town well. I'm also a coastal resident. I live on Mankin Beach, on a little plummy street called Jolle Avenue. For ten years, I was the community liaison that stayed up during camp. During that time period, we had a lot of issues with FEMA and sea dogs and flooding. And I was in the right place at the right time to help that office. Sort of as a town liaison, I went to a lot of meetings, I met a lot of people at that time. And we were able to get some grants from the town that came in handy. And when I read that same email that we all read, it encouraged me. But I really didn't, you know, know what was going on, and it helped us immediately. A lot of us read that email. David Ball, who was involved with the T Law Committee years ago, reached out to me and a few others, and said, I think that he does. In a ten, a coastal advisory committee. And we really weren't sure why we were there. We were there as potential volunteers or some critical capacity. But I do feel that I've done somewhere in the past, and I can be of help again, on angels.
Appreciate it, thank you. Let's go with Dan Sullivan. You can go, and then we'll go to Chris after that. So Dan, you are up.
Good evening. Everyone hear me alright?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it was on great.
So I'm a, I live at forty-nine Rebecca Road, which is a front row seat on the Atlantic Ocean. Been in town for thirty years. My kids went through the school system. I moved here from Thompson Island, Boston Harbor. Survived the storm of ninety-one, which basically devastated the island. That's one of the reasons I'm stepping up for this position. The, I basically worked my whole life on or around the ocean. Running boats as a captain, working in the marine industry. Everything I've ever done has been involved in the ocean. And why now would be basically that I've, I've got the. And, uh, why now would be basically that I've, I've got the time to give back and, you know. I guess the term was, I've slacked a little bit by giving back to the town over the years. I've taken a lot from it in thirty years and had a great time living here, so now I have the time to give back and I'm ready to go.
Yeah, thank you. Chris, you're up.
Hey, my name's Chris Riccio. It's a pleasure to be back in front of the board here, uh, to consider, be considered for another possible committee assignment. Uh, I live on Surfside Road, uh, on the ocean, so I can see firsthand what happens during storms and king tides, uh, et cetera. I've worked with emergency management departments since nineteen ninety-nine, as well as public safety organizations. And I know the inner workings of how each department handles and responds to disasters and what their roles are. I've done many things under this umbrella, including responding to disasters personally, both natural and not, and assisting during the events. Being a liaison, working with MIMA, the State Emergency Management Agency, and FEMA. Working on anything from flood mitigation techniques to ways to be ready for future nor'easters, blizzards, storms and more. I've been responsible for alerting residents of storm and disasters that were coming and what to do, and once they have arrived, how to handle them. And I harnessed my technological background as a computer and system engineer, uh, to be more efficient and notifying and disseminating that information in a more timely and a more efficient way. In town for the last two years, I've been working with Bob Vogel, the building commissioner, going over and learning the building and code regulations that FEMA and the town have in place for current and future buildings being built in both velocity zones and flood zones. And I've become well-versed in the regulations FEMA imposes on repetitive loss structures, their programs with National Flood Insurance Program, renovation guidelines, raising houses on piles and managed retreat plans. I've read the town's climate vulnerability assessments and resilience plans to be more informed of what's been done in the past and what can be done in the future to protect the citizens of this town. I've been working with Chief Donovan and listening to his concerns, most importantly about the current way residents are warned and alerted of upcoming storms, the timing of it, and some inefficiencies that are happening. So I've been advising him with the skills, experience and resources that I have with this and a few other issues advising him and how more streamlined notification approaches can happen with the technology present available that we can do. So that precious resources aren't wasted on alerting and notifying people on an individual basis, but during disasters, that takes more time. I'd love the opportunity to formally be recognized and placed on the committee so that I can assist and take on more projects. I'd love the opportunity to work with the others to make Situate more prepared and safer when things happen and to be a resource for the citizens of the town to answer and assist whenever I can, before, during and after disaster strikes so that everyone can be as safe as possible.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate it, yeah. Uh, we will start with questions.
Well, I'm the lead on, and I have the ball.
Why, do you want everybody? I, that'd be nice. We could do that. Questions?
Um, no, I mean, I think you're all in touch with candidates, it's gonna be really hard. And good answers. I think the answers were really good. I mean, you answered a good question. They answered a question.
Yeah, they answered a question.
It's hard to have a poll of whether you have your questions up.
Well, I guess one of the questions I would have for, for all the candidates, because I think one of the challenges we're gonna have tonight, unless we at some later date address the charge itself, is, is fitting, you know, squares and cubes here. Trying to figure out what three positions we can fill in a different way. This to me is a practical consideration. I think all five of you have qualifications to serve well on a board like this, uh, on a mission like this. Um, so I guess my question would be to each of you, um. Being a coastal resident, I think four, four of the five of you live somewhere near the coast, I think would all qualify as a coastal, uh, part of the committee. The, the bigger question I have, I guess, is, um, unless I'm, unless I'm incorrect. Liz currently has an association with the direct business in our town. Do any of the others of you have a direct connection with the current Situate business? And then the second question would be, um, it seems to me that a couple of you sort of have technical expertise or backgrounds that would sort of dovetail with coastal, uh, requirements. Can you speak to the technical capacities that we need on a mission like this to help understand those more higher tech components of coastal management? So if that question makes sense, do we have a joint template?
All right. Does that, does that make sense to everybody basically looking at?
Do you have a connection to a local business?
A.
No.
And B, do you have, uh, a feel for, uh, speaking to the technical components that would be needed on a mission?
All right, it'll be like a fantasy football snake draft. We'll go in commercial, so Chris, you're up first.
I do not have any, uh, direct relationship to a business in town, no. But technically speaking, I've done, like I said, emergency management since nineteen ninety-nine. I've been involved in flood mitigation planning, uh, and responding to floods. I've worked with Chief Donovan, uh, for the last couple of years, uh, on developing systems and planning, um, different options for this committee and what it entails. Um, and I've worked with Bob Vogel on the building side of it to learn about, um, you know, the proper use of like, you know, building, buildings and what is required for there with the FEMA organization, the National Flood Insurance Protection Program, the raising of homes and structures. So on the building side of it, I've got all of that. And then with Chief Donovan on the technical side of what we've been working on, um, with that. And then my previous experience in MIMA, the state agency, uh, FEMA the federal and also the, uh, other cities that I've worked in with, um, emergency management.
And then, Dan, you're up.
Yeah, so I do not have any, um, association with a, uh, any kind of business in the town. And as far as the technical part is not a problem for me, I'll embrace that on whatever level we need.
Great, appreciate it. Thanks.
I must say, everyone seems to have a tremendous amount of technical, um, background, which is impressive. Um, I think the interesting question about my background is as a business person. Um, I've been with Jack Conway and said it for a long time. So in two thousand and twelve, I believe it was, um, we went through this period in town and all over the country. The FEMA was trying to rate the rate of flood insurance and change the flood insurance maps all over the country. And at that time, I was in a unique position that I was dealing with homeowners that could not sell their homes because they were not necessarily able to tell the next trauma that they were going to be looking forward to live here in five years. If FEMA triples your budget. So during that time period, um, Joe Knopf was one of our selectmen and he was a force of nature at Carpent Trust. And so, um, I was lucky that I went with Joe and Jim. And there's a whole contingent of, of business people that went to DC and we went before Congress, we changed federal law. Um, everything was happening really fast with FEMA and it's hard to explain it all now, but basically. We needed help from the federal government, so Congressman Keating was the one who stepped up and contacted the Woodstool Oceanographic Group down in Fallon. And they figured out that FEMA was using the same data from the west coast to the east coast. But we have very different coastlines, on west coast and east coast, we can't do that. So suddenly, everything was up for discussion. And we were able to, to actually work right on the ground floor of changing legislation and serving language. That it was this misconception that the only ones who had to worry about flood insurance were local homeowners on both east and west coast. Well, it also affected anyone looking near body water, abrupt stream, pond, lake, um, a marsh in the middle, in the Midwest. It, it didn't matter where you lived, it was going with that on loss. Um, so I do think at that time that my experience as a Realtor helped when I had to, um, speak. Um, in a few of those struggle meetings, that this is going to impact a lot of people. And your mother might not be able to sell her home on Brook Street because there's a brook running through the backyard and it has never bothered her property and there's no issue of flooding. But the FEMA got away with expanding those flood maps the way they wanted to, if you guys can play. People that never had a drought, were suddenly going to be paying ridiculous flood insurance fees. So that's my business background, I guess, um, that might be paying this community. So if I can help and find some more grants to help this, this town and our community.
Excellent. Liz Henderson also be a miracle worker.
So I do a lot with Congressman Keating still, um, when I was, when I was the community liaison to Jim Campbell. He went on to be, um, state director for Senator Markey. Uh, Patrick Kearney is doing a great job, you know, as, as the state rep now. Um, so I'm now special project now. I do various little things behind the scenes. But Congressman Keating is very, very, um, concerned about the social, me and Ellen has discussed. So I know that he is, um, actually he's going to be in Situate on September twenty-fifth. I am arranging a meeting, great for those of you who are interested, um, all residents are welcome. It will be at Malini's. Stay tuned for, do you know?
Uh, I don't have a, uh, business connection into my, but my background, uh, both in EPA and both in Witten Town was a primarily a technical background, again, specific to coastal areas. With respect to EPA and the National History Program, uh, you know, the, the brass ring, uh, for all the national history programs around the country is and was a development of what is referred to as a park and so conservation management plan. Which included issues related to coastal erosion and, and things like that. Uh, when climate change became a thing, uh, several years ago, that got integrated into what was being put down under the CCMEs. And, you know, part of my job, uh, looking at the, the national program was in reviewing and making contributions to those management plans that are being developed around the country. So, uh, and my work outside of EPA while I was with the town, again, was very technical, uh, and orientation. Uh, working on sediment issues. I'm not a coastal engineer, uh, I wanna be right up front about that. Uh, biologist by training, but, uh, you know, had to deal with, uh, a whole basket full of coastal related issues. From a technical perspective, so I feel very comfortable with that as a topic here.
Thank you.
Oh, I have no, uh, business affiliation in Situate. I'm a librarian and, um. And I, the technical is way beyond me.
Don't under shell, don't under shell the lumber.
Oh, no, I love the logical.
That's one question for Corey. When is the next meeting? Oh, we have a schedule here. So it depends on, so I'm thinking, why don't we change the charge and, I have a next meeting and then, wait, I don't think it's. That's just mine. I'm serious. Like, you can interview people and not make a decision. I was, before we make that decision, we asked Corey if she has any questions for, for any of the candidates. No, I think they're wonderful. I didn't.
My honest, I at least thought about it.
I was just reading her mind. I was like, because I'm also reading the minutes. Because we, they need people to help and that people are willing to help.
Right.
When the chairs are just gonna be changing the charge, next meeting is in the overall five and.
Okay. I mean, after my conversation with Corey earlier tonight and my feelings with these candidates, I'm gonna hold them on. I mean, the absence is gonna be.
But that's going to move, and that makes this question go way crazy, way ahead of the game.
It's always ready to go.
Uh, I just wanted to clarify so I understood where we stood, where we were going, but I don't disagree with that at all. There we go.
All right.
All right. Roots led over. We do, see? Welcome to like May and two weeks.
Our two weeks, two weeks. Well, thank you all. We gotta, we gotta finalize everything that's happening.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Dan.
Where is the coal power company? We want to.
Probably.
Well.
I think it's hot air for five.
All right, we have a contract.
That was great. We couldn't, Mr. Chairman, we can't make a multi, you know, maybe play around.
Yeah, let's do that, so. Yeah, let's keep them in. Keep rolling, man. All right, let's do this. Very exciting contract. It keeps us rolling into the gas and diesel, talking about the gas list. Been pretty straightforward. Um. You can answer any questions, hopefully.
I don't see that.
It's in there, page thirty-three. It was just.
It is thirty-three, yeah. So this is, all right, gas list is all set by the, yeah, this is all on state contracts.
Yeah.
Gas prices set, over the weight of hours with our exchange. Twenty-three cents over the exchange, which is actually the first day of our contracts.
Grab this little one here, I'll drop it.
It's basically the back of the cloud and then I get the back.
You have the right one.
Yeah. All right, so this is, and so again, this is the contract. It does not exceed five hundred thousand. Approaching home now, last year we started, what, uh, two, three, is it a station? Twenty-six. Hey, this is off the state, because I don't really have a lot of, I don't believe I. Questions, concerns?
I have none.
Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for gasoline, diesel and gas. Going once, going twice.
No question. Move to a word of contract, purchase gasoline, pursuant to state contract ENE five-four and alter those over diesel. Diesel pursuant to state contract ENE five-three to Yanis Caveberg, uh, two-eight-four Eastern South, L C M A in the period of September first, two thousand and five through August thirty-first. Uh, what did they say, two thousand, two thousand and twenty-five through August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. For a total sum now to exceed five hundred thousand.
Move a trail of six, five, go on the favor. I, I see Yanis, we will have trucks that will be full of us.
That's not a truck, Dave.
That's a truck, yeah.
That's right.
Special truck, that would have been visible.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Vogel, how are you? Let's talk.
Very well.
Bylaws, uh, interesting stuff.
Very.
Liz.
So, Liz, I think this is getting in by law.
I need to know where I'm at.
Uh, more on the way of housekeeping than almost anything else, but. I had some experiences over the past six months that, uh, I've been looking at some of the bylaw language, uh, because it touched on issues that I was, um, working with various residents on and some enforcement issues. And, uh, brought that to Jim's attention. Jim suggested that before it goes to the bylaw review committee, you need to come before this fourth. So there's three sections and, and, uh, I happened to just land in this area of the bylaws principally because of the section three oh two six oh. Um, I've had several instances, uh, complaints by residents, uh, bidders to properties where storage containers have sat and remain and been unsightly, um, you know, for a much longer period of time than they're allowed. Uh, first they get permits, second they're only allowed to be there for six months. And so I looked at the bylaw section that addresses this and was surprised to find out that it was labeled temporary storage trailers. Um, there's no definition of trailers in the general bylaws, but the definition, definition of trailers in the zoning bylaws talks about something that's on a chassis and be moved from site to site, et cetera, et cetera. Doesn't really describe a typical storage pod or typical shipping container, which is the kind of thing that I seem to have been dealing with, you know, dur- during these, this process. So my suggestion is that we would change the temporary storage trailer section to a new title, storage containers. And, um, it basically then follows what you need to do to permit those containers. Um, what they can and can't be, two hundred and sixteen cubic feet, I believe, if I did my math right, is six by six by six. Well, you know, that's as big as a couple of refrigerators. I couldn't see needing a permit for that. I couldn't see it being objectionable to on a butter, for example. But anything over that size, yes, probably it, it could fall into that, that category. But anything over that size, yes, probably it could fall into that, that category. Another thing that I was, I wanted to include in this section is dumpsters. There's no language at all about dumpsters in either the general bylaws or the zoning bylaws. And I've had several complaints about dumpsters on, principally on construction sites, but neglected, not empty periodically, overflowing, unsightly, et cetera, et cetera. So I thought there was a good, uh, good reason to address that situation here as well as part of a storage container bylaw that, that kind of incorporated dumpsters into it. That's the principal change. And then I started, started looking kind of in that same area and the requested change to the unregistered motor vehicle section is only to bring the language that talks about the violation of the amount of fine that each violation occurs and the days before the violation period has, has started. That just, that's the same language as used in the following section. So that's a small change that I think really is housekeeping. Even though that's a police matter, actually by statute, uh, I get a lot of complaints in the office about that. So it's kind of on my mind as well. The last section, three oh two eight oh, storage containers, trailers and motorhomes are habitable space. It does first overlap zoning. There's a section four fifty point three in zoning bylaws, which really does come in a section of this new wording. The last, the last sentence of this new wording is probably redundant. It's already covered by that section of zoning bylaws. But, um, the first part, I think, could be appropriate and, and might be something that the town would want to have on the books. Anyone sort of browsing the internet has seen that there's a surge of either articles about or advertisements for housing units that use storage containers as their basis, whether it's called veterans' housing or Indian law housing, that kind of thing. And kind of runs into the same range as the tiny houses that have already been sort of discussed quite a bit. Again, this would be up to the bylaw committee to review and, and pass on, but it seems to me that situat residents may not, may not really want this type of housing in the town. I mean, it certainly got its merits. I don't think that, you know, it's, it's appropriate for this, for this town or this type of, uh, situation, but again, it's something the bylaw committee would, would decide on, but I thought I would put that in at the same time since I was talking about storage containers in the previous section. So that's, that's where we are.
So these would be for the annual town meeting. Now the question is, do you want to put these forward to the bylaw review committee? They'll send it, borders aren't pursued, we won't even sign them all, but just a lot. Last one, I think the town has to have a discussion about storage containers as habitable space. And maybe we make a decision that we want to allow them, but I think there should be some sort of, they should be addressed definitively once in the eye, either to allow them or not. That's probably the only decision. Do you want to just send this to the bylaw review committee to stop?
Chair, I think, always helping to review and update things into the world as it is today versus the world as it was when these were written. So if you have my support on this, I'd be happy to make the motion when you tell me to. Uh, no, not yet. I said, what do you tell me?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So just from a technical standpoint, anything we forward to the bylaw review committee is going to be reviewed. They're making a recommendation back to us, and so the, the referrals to me has merit and logic to it. And that's what the review committee is for. We're gonna assess what they recommend anyhow, so it's made up, makes perfect sense. I guess the, the second what Jamie just said, the concept of pods and other exception containers, the reason you're dealing with them now and the amount here is because they're only ten years old. And this was bylaws written probably well before pods was a company.
Could be.
And so, so storage containers, they get shipped around, you know, versus moving trucks. It's a fairly new concept relative to bylaws. So I think that that makes sense in terms of updates, absolutely. In terms of habitable space, I guess, Jim, just to follow up on what you were just saying. We could wait for the, the review of the bylaw committee and then discuss it then, but my question would be, what would the perspective be that we need to decide either way? Is there a big current demands for habitable containers being situated? It's pushing us to make a definitive decision. Are there enough complaints about habitable containers?
No, absolutely not.
I just wonder if looking for, um, necessitating a conversation, especially on a town meeting floor, almost makes it kind of a fox question rather than leaving it as a zero complaint, zero habitable container question.
Right, but zero complaints, zero habitable, is that what someone was saying, like by law, we're gonna speak to it?
I think it's proactive.
There's no, there's no proactive.
Arguing it, I'm just curious if that's.
And you will start seeing them now.
Well, they may be used by right.
Oh, you're gonna start.
Sometimes.
So based on, let's put it forward and see what the bylaw.
It doesn't start with this frame, yeah?
Which is quite strange.
I guess I just had a one que, I had some questions on the actual storage containers. If they're defined as pods, trailers, dumpsters, anything that's over two hundred and sixteen cubic feet. So, and like it said, and it's, you have to get a permit, right? And that's how you know that it's, they can be there for six.
Explain this question.
Six months, right? So, and then it, then it goes on to say you can get an exception to maintain a dumpster, but noth, nothing about an exception for a storage container. I guess I would just think like, someone's doing major construction, they're gonna have a dumpster and they're around a storage container, put all their stuff in. And then for the, so would there be a way to make an exception? Or did you ponder an, an exception for a storage container as well?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good point. So you can, you can extend any permit, um, for six months.
Okay.
By coming in basically to the building office and, you know, stating your reasons and then we'll sign it off. I think that's a, you might wanna, you might wanna have that in writing, but I believe that's in the mass building code in terms of building permits. Whether it would extend to this, I've, I've done it before without really, you know, trying to make a connection.
Okay.
Well, this is standardized. But if we're gonna allow containers with a policy and we're gonna allow dumpsters with a policy, I agree, it probably kind of goes hand in hand. When they might give this extension, it should be sort of a standard extension.
Right, but I do think about the, the discretion of the building commission.
Oh, agreed.
You know, because there'll be circumstances where it is, um, appropriate in circumstances. I'd tell you, we're not.
Right, no progress on construction.
Right.
Yes.
I, I guess, uh, the fourth spot is an exception could be made to maintain a dumpster and maybe ship a container pod or trailer on an ongoing construction site as determined by the building commission. So I take those, add them down there, so.
Right, if you have any of the construction as opposed to just.
Just having an exception, right? So tie it in there and we can set it off.
You, you also mentioned about the last sentence in the three oh two eight oh section is sort of duplicitous to the, uh, building code.
I'm in to the zoning law.
Sorry, 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 the zoning.
Right.
Is there, do we, are we gonna standardize the language from the zoning bylaw here? So that if we're gonna put it in two places, it matches?
I would be more tempted, you know, I think to just delete that last sentence.
Okay.
The more I think about it, the four fifty one.
Already?
Yeah.
It's a limit already. I just don't wanna create a, I don't wanna create a conflict between two se, two sections of the bylaw.
True, by law committee.
Right, that's my only thing that I just did there.
The only thing that's not mentioned in the zoning four fifty point three section is that, yes, if I own a mobile home, I can park it on my site. But I guess that, that's understood anyway, so I can't live in it, but, you know, I gotta have some.
Well, again, I could have forwarded this and prepared for the discussion.
Yeah, I agree. That, I just had that.
That was the question.
Motion. No, not yet. So, um, so my concerns are this, is that, um, not, it's not, I agree, we should forward it to the, to the bylaw committee, but the eyes, to me, I guess I want this board to think about this, is that their eyes are really on, we're not seeing the full picture, right? We do this a lot. We send it to one committee and they, and they're not gonna talk to your portable housing trust. The point is, is it a good idea or not? It's different from, is it technically okay? Is it all the, the dots, everything else? Even the storage containers. I'd love to know if E D C has an issue or problem with this since Board one four three has a storage container out back and has been using it, or what? So I agree with putting it forward, but I also really want us to, as a board, to think that's not the only committee. They're gonna come back and say, yes or no, but not, oh. Then a portable housing trust comes and says, this is the greatest thing since sliced bread. And they're like, no, this is the, we don't know. So I, sorry, I was wanting to.
And is this only residential? Look, you made a good point. Is this only residential?
I wouldn't say it's intended to only be residential. I mean, the policy. The effective policy is that there's a lot of changes around town. I follow off on the ones where somebody has complained and that's in the residential district.
So, cause I don't wanna come back, Jamie, it's your fault. I don't wanna come back and have these, I want these questions answered when all this comes back from a bylaw review and probably E D C and probably a portable housing trust or whomever. So we don't have this situation where we're trying to do policy on the block.
Just blow our technical point container.
Yeah, it's anything, it's just approved of one.
It is. So I mean to.
But no, that's living, isn't it?
No, that's.
Yeah. It's gonna be a longer six months.
Right, true.
So we have, uh, chief, sorry, yes.
Yeah, I have acquired a fire because dumpsters are covered under the fire code as well. It'd be required. So we, we probably wanna provide some input.
Yeah, so, so we need to expand this motion and bring it forward.
That's why I was saying, let's make it to say they expand it to additional committees that are relevant or something, or.
Who's gonna raise that list of committees?
I'll put him here. Nancy has a thought.
Having spent a lot of time with bylaw review, they wanna review bylaws. So if, they may wanna have some kind of a internal working group that's maybe between the department heads, starts figuring out what the issues are, and then from there, expand it out to the committees and boards who would have input on it.
Really, that, I look, Nancy's always good. Because I don't give a view.
Absolutely.
This visit, I mean, yeah, the chief, great point, you'd love to know what's happening. I just don't want to come in and then she comes and, hey, we didn't get to see this. And I think, so I approved it.
Logical for the, to the department heads.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I'm just not sure with the bylaw, certain committee does, I guess.
There is a wording to make sure that the wording is updated.
Clear.
Or they're not the, the value judgment that this.
Actually.
That makes sense, huh? That technically makes sense, all those things that match.
This fits, but it does not actually mean if you don't want it, if you don't wanna regulate it or if you don't want it.
All right, I support that.
We can, we can.
Let's just send them back to the departments.
Perfect. Let's do a motion, do that. Oh, yes, we do, our, our, we do need a motion if we wanna make sure that we didn't want it to potentially.
Move ahead, please. Move to forward suggested changes to code of general bylaws, draft date eight thirteen, two thousand twenty five, to the department heads within the town hall, so as to facilitate further information to the appropriate committees for determination.
Love it. Move back, Mr. Fillmore, second and I, I'm the slave, I'm all in favor. I, it was Yanis.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is good.
This goes. All right. Thank you, chief, but, I mean, oh, thank you.
Yeah, there's, there's.
I, I also wanna just input that as a, as a, not quite a situat, ha, ha, having been with most of my life, I'm blown away by the talent, the expertise and the credentials that were just presented to the board.
Yeah.
And for the posting committee.
Yes, unbelievable.
It is, it's unbelievable.
Last. Thank you, boss.
Temperatures nice, I hope you do.
Okay.
Nancy financial updates.
Do you know if you wanna be the yield, if you're discussing, oh, you want this?
Oh.
I'm going to finish with you in next comments.
Well, we go through the item.
Okay.
Stolen numbers. You want me out?
No, no, you're welcome to stay, sorry.
No, I sit in elevens, I like to be.
You're joking, yeah, yeah, no, I.
Trying not to make you listen to my boring presentation if you don't have it.
Yeah, I'll do that. I listened and there's, I didn't even want to do it when that was on.
It's after your, like, easement and Nancy and just in case he needed this. Yeah.
Quick, we have to.
It's one of the last things.
Let's just keep rolling.
Okay.
I'm good, or else I'm gonna be so confused. We don't know what's.
I'm delighted to be before the board to provide you with a brief overview. I could go into rap room for hours, but Jim would kill me. So, anything that strikes your fancy as we go through this, we can certainly bring it back and expand upon it. And I'm just going to give you a brief financial update as to where the town is after the end of fiscal twenty twenty five. So we'll just go through the agenda items that are on the slide, touch on these items. There's only, um, eleven slides and I have ten, so we'll go right along. So how do we end the year? We just had our free cash and enterprise fund retained earnings certified. And what that basically is, is revenues that came in above what was expected and expenses that were turned back and any unused free cash retained earnings from the prior year. So we have a healthy free cash and all of our enterprise funds are doing well. So, and the sources basically where those funds are coming from are on your screen. We have a special town meeting article potentially. It'll be, uh, the next agenda item for our budget reconciliation item. And it'll be November third, twenty twenty five, special town meeting. Financial Forecast Committee is, uh, pro, tentatively scheduled for next week to meet to discuss additional state aid that came in and any recommendations for its use, as well as looking at fiscal twenty seven period. Right now, the only thing we're really keeping an eye on the budget side, everything is specifically gasoline, cost diesel and utility budget lines. As you can see from all the work that's going around, going on in the town buildings, facility repairs and improvements are well underway and the maintenance budgets are being put to good use. So the board has already seen the reserves, but I wanted to tie it back to the reserve policies. So these are all of the reserves that the town has. We can see multiple stabilization funds. There's one for every enterprise fund. We also have the settlements for O B O I and P F A S as well. Uh, and the reserve policy that each one speaks to and what the recommended amount is in that reserve policy. So right now, our stabilization fund is where we want it to be between three and twenty. Our capital stabilization is a little low, so that's something that potentially the board wants to look at at the special town meeting. Um, and the enterprise funds are pretty, pretty well. Sewer capital stabilization has fallen because we used it at the, in the spring for the capital plan. Based on their retained earnings, it may not be possible to, not to, bring it back up too much in the current period. And the water waste capital stabilization fund exists, but has never been funded as water waste commission doesn't necessarily recommend it because they feel retained earnings just will close out at the end of the year and become useful in the following year and it requires time and votes, so there's no need for it. Uh, our workers' compensation trust fund has hit its goal of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is great. Uh, our old capital liability trust fund, the reserve policy six specifies the different funding sources and it net all of those funding sources for twenty five. And instead of reserve fund, um, it's not stabilization fund, it's a different type of. And instead of reserve fund, um, it's not stabilization fund, it's a different type of reserve, doesn't require a time, you know, um, but it has a maximum balance of two percent of net spending, which is about seven hundred and fifty thousand, so about twenty percent there of that max balance.
Question, can you go back? The, um, water waste capital stabilization fund, is by not having that, are we not fol- does that mean we're not following our reserve policy?
Yes. Currently, our reserve policy is two to ten percent.
So, that is something you may want to.
Well, like, I, I mean, I think we need to discuss that, because following our financial policy, that's how we keep our earnings rates low.
Right.
It's not based on opinion, though.
Right, well, yeah, absolutely.
Right? Our, Nancy, this is what you taught me.
Yeah, and this is why we drop the policies.
Because you have to have adopted financial policy, they have to be consistent with every one of our funds, and we have to then follow those, so that when we are rated annually.
So, what should that value be, if it's two to ten percent of the operating budget? How much should we add in or reduce it?
Um, so, water waste budget isn't about the same as widow's walk. So, you probably want a couple hundred thousand dollars in.
Quarter of that, yeah.
Right.
Quarter of it.
And water waste, um, retained earnings is very strong this year, so if you wanted to start working plus that, that's something that could be done at special town meeting.
You don't have to get throughout the ones.
No, no, we should.
We know, I know, but I mean, I think, I think the, then it shows you you're moving forward, the, well, okay.
Put a point in. You know, hundred thousand. Good point.
Uh, and I'm just trying to tie everything back to our, uh, financial policies, that's why you're saying to mention of them. Current long term debt, um, this is where it all breaks down to, as of the end of fiscal year, we've got a hundred and five point six million dollars in outstanding principal. In, uh, principal and interest, it's a hundred and thirty four point six. What's more important is how fast we're paying that down. Our debt policy two requires that fifty percent of the total debt be retired within, um, ten years, exclusive debt exclusions. As you can see by the yellow blocks, which is very hard to see, we are meeting that even with the debt exclusions. In ten years, we'll be sixty eight percent, um, retired. But if you look at the different marks, uh, the different years, uh, we're gonna be fully retired in many funds by fifteen years, and pretty much ninety nine percent retired in twenty years. So, we have, do try to do rapid amortization, we try to pay down quickly, rather than go the whole loop that we're allowed to, so that gives us more opportunities.
That's assuming we don't spend any more money.
Yes. Uh, this gives us the opportunity to not increase our debt service budgets, and still do capital, uh, projects that require our. State's done.
Go ahead. Steve, with one question for me. Um, at the top of the twenty six here today, you said that we have a hundred and eighty seven thousand in financial forecast committee in addition to state aid. That's coming FY twenty six, so we just chose twenty five, that's.
In twenty six.
That's not projected, that's, that's assumed final number for twenty six.
It is. They didn't pass their budget to allow it to be given.
And in terms of allocation, that would dump into the general fund unless we allocate it to something else, which, as a hypothetical, we had the right to say dump it into water waste capital stabilization or something like that.
You couldn't, you, you wouldn't want a cross between an enterprise fund and the general fund unless we're bailing it out for a deficit. Um, if the, uh, town meeting was to do nothing with it, we have an article that was already passed, and annual town meetings is a standard article that would sweep it into the stabilization fund. Like, um, so, financial forecast will pocket out it, and then recommendations from that committee will come back to you through Jim. Back to debt policy two, because it's a fun policy. Um, it specifies that, uh, a percentage of the annual operational budget shall not be, um, be dedicated to debt service, that will put the rest of the budget at risk. So, uh, fifteen percent is the limit for the general fund, we're at two point nine percent. Um, the debt exclusions, the license their exclusions, they don't have anything in the debt policy specific to that. And then the enterprise funds, because of the type of infrastructure we're reviewing in sewer and water, have a very high amount of sixty percent. Normally, you wouldn't see something that high, and that's why it's transportation is at one point nine, because of the infrastructure improvements that are going on in the bigger enterprise funds. So, right now, we're in full compliance with debt policy two. Um, we're almost done, we're almost, uh, what everybody always wants to know about is the debt exclusions. These are the current debt exclusions we have. Uh, Jenkins retired as of for twenty twenty five, Wampe Tech's school improvements will retire in a few years. The library, public safety, and middle school were retired in fiscal forty, senior center in fiscal forty one, the treatment plant, um, probably fifty nine, we don't control that borrowing, it's down through the clean water crust, show it all, depends on when we get pulled into a pool. Um, pushing the outcome is to be determined, and South Shore BoTech, which is grow only pay our proportion this year, which will probably be around seventy eight percent, is to be determined. So, estimated, uh, for fiscal twenty six is slightly lower than fiscal twenty five. We did have savings from a refunding of a bond that's affecting three of each debt exclusions, and we have some premiums that were received from that refunding that we can also apply to it. As you can see, the water treatment plant is just a small amount in the same precaution cavity, those are just the short term items that are up there right now.
Again, Nancy, for learning, uh, estimates are based on per household or per taxpayer?
Good, and, and good question, you go, thank you. It's based on the average single family assessed house value, which for fiscal twenty five is not gonna be one thousand. So, for some people, a little higher, some probably lower. I tend to forget the number when it can be wrong. And so, I changed from the red into a happy gold color. Um, just a happy one in this one. Basically, the, uh, congregate meal program, this is a revolve found with the senior center, which is very important when the senior center was passed, that we have, um, this congregate meal program. In fiscal twenty two, it was a fifty over twelve dollars, uh, per unit cost, meaning that it was being supported by the general fund as part of the budget. It's still being supported by the general fund, but over the last four years, the cost of client is still five dollars a meal. Um, and it's still around twelve dollars, either cost. And the higher cost at the very beginning was also some of the newer, some of the things they had to buy, that they didn't have, that just to get a program on their mind. So, I thought this is a deep, the, the board sees it, but I think it is nice for the public to see it as well. This is a very, um, popular program, they have a weightless for, and it is still after four years ago, we operated about the same dollar value, but that would perhaps increase.
They're interested.
So.
Plus, if, is there flesh and gross food?
I don't know. That's a, what?
What was it, correct?
And then the final slide in the financial overview is just to look ahead for fiscal twenty seven. Um, some of the, the board discussed at their retreat meeting. For, right now, new growth is slow, interest rates are high, so there's not a lot of development going on, even though there are some permanent projects. Our estimated tax levy increase with new growth is only two to make six million to cover everything. Just the employee debt fixed costing is about a million five, that's health insurance, Medicare, pension assessment. Balance of loan two has to cover all the other expenses, including contract awarding costs, um, and other shared costs, so this is going to be a very difficult year. And I did want to remind the board that budget policy two specifies that no one time revenues will be used to balance the budget, so no free cash, no stabilization fund can be used to balance the budget without violating our financial policies. And that is the end of the very brief financial overview. More than willing to address questions or anything else that we would like to discuss for, in a future meeting. Stunned into silence, another great presentation.
Questions, comments?
It was, it was a great presentation. I keep wanting to thunder, good, thank you. Um, I guess, I guess we get it. General learning, my one question would be, for now. Um, that exact last point you made, because that would have been my first question. Why does policy two state that we couldn't take part of that seven point five million dollars of the cash, decide to avoid, override, let's say?
You can get your own way there.
That's right, Nancy, I, I assumed answer, but I just.
No.
So, we have a policy in place, we don't wanna make bad mistakes one at a time.
We're just kicking the can down the road.
What, what happens then is, you take two million dollar budget stabilization fund to balance your budget. The next year, you don't have it, you're two billion dollars in the hole before you even stop your budget.
Yeah.
So, you're gonna make that up before you start doing that, so it just digs the whole deal.
Yeah, here's one, I have everything.
I don't have questions, your presentations make so much sense, and I don't have that kind of brain, so, and I appreciate your hard work.
The two newest members will get used to my PowerPoint selections.
Good, happy goals.
My only, yeah.
Mark compliments, it's, it's a good report, and it does tempt us looking forward to two thousand twenty seven, doesn't it?
It does, and we'll have more information after financial forecast meets.
I appreciate that.
Right, we have a lot to discuss.
Yes.
And you just kind of go that.
Yeah, this is the opening.
The news.
The opening salvo, so it's been.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, watch, this is not optional.
So, of course, no.
So, we are gonna move on now. Nancy, you stayed there, I, I will, now I'll make your advice, and I will not page two. Uh, we're gonna go to boards and committee appointments. Because, I mean, you wanted to say for those stuff, but we're done, we're staying for this, so.
Yeah, sorry, I thought I said it, this side was up, I didn't know if you wanted.
No, you can, yeah, no, totally, yeah, yeah.
You can stay for the whole meeting until we go into objectives.
I'll.
Yes.
So, you know, please.
Comments, you can, you can make the, you can make the motion for the individual names are the ones that there's only one person in favor of, unless somebody has a.
Yeah, yeah, in the conjunction of the, like, the.
And, um.
Conversation, like.
And then.
Everybody wanna vote?
For, for, for. Only gimmies, I mean, I was simply gonna say that it made sense to me to to have Coleman Sherb on the Affordable Housing Trust.
I would agree.
He'd help there, and, and if he's willing, and it's gonna be a great opportunity to, to have a board that's ready for the future.
Yep.
And, and appoint Matt, happy to ZBA, um, and that fills that vacancy, and that's important as well, so I think we can, you know, win win here.
Well, in favor, but I can make that motion, I think that's whether it, well, how you feel.
Aye.
Yeah, and also because of what TR, which you mentioned, I have you, literally retired, but there's new bylaws that we want housing to be looking into, so it's almost as if it's set up perfectly. The containers have, like, it's like, this is like the perfect fit. Uh, it's even better than, uh, I expected, and you're right, there's gonna be more, so that crossover.
So, I think it's valuable to have somebody.
Yeah.
Coming on as we go.
Yeah, I'm feeling good about that, but trust me, this is a good thing.
I really appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, so let's, let's, well, let's stay for the vote, we can hang out all here, and then not wait for the final, right? And you can say a lot for two. Yeah, yeah, please.
Motion to appoint Dallas Shepherd to the Verification Commission for a term of three years or until his successor is named. Further, move to appoint Stephen McGuire to the Citroen Bicycle Committee for a term of three years or until his successor is named. Further, move to appoint Matthew Chin to the Zoning Board of Beels as the second alternate for a term of three years or until his successor is named. Further, move to appoint Coleman Garner Smith to the Affordable Housing Trust for a term of two years or until his successor is named.
Second, second, so we move Mr. Gilmore second, seconded by to me Gilmore, fumbled that, seconded by the slave dog, all in favor, aye, aye, to unanimous. So, welcome to the housing, to the.
And then, Mr. Chair, just to remind you, we'll, in the next meeting, we will change the charge to the codes for commission, and then move forward on that.
Yes, we'll, we'll revisit that, and you're willing to say for everything else, too, and we are doing, uh, an ease mix, like. Sure, yeah, yeah.
I don't, I have anyone's number, can you just, I mean.
Oh, wait, Charlotte, yeah.
We're getting a lot of from us.
Okay.
Oh, she's gonna get terrible.
She'll make a pair.
Take a free.
Johnny's, Charlie's here for that.
Believe me.
From Jim, we'll, we'll, we'll put an appointment letter, and then we'll put you on the chair of that.
Okay, we're not gonna miss all of you now.
Yeah, you know, we're, we're clawing you now, but, well, alright, so, and then back to Nancy. Articles to be included on the special town.
So, we hold, sorry, we're going on all the special posts until after we change the terms.
Yeah, so we'll look to see, and then.
They're not having a meeting, I don't think, or I don't think.
There's no, there's no getting pissed, so.
Yeah, when I, so, I'm sorry.
Uh, you're not gonna call, you're not gonna call these people back in, right?
No, no.
So, Chief Donovan, yeah, for these, just take that, so. Let's see, let's, sorry, you're right, let's do these now.
Work that's okay.
She, she's near me anyway, so we're in the end, so. Shouting anybody from Greed on for this one, uh?
No, no national press.
Yeah, Mike, wanna just give us a brief update on what the easement is?
Yeah, um, the, uh, this, this is a, a pole that our favorite, number, uh, forty one first tariff road is, um, it would like, we've got the property, uh, we built the station in nineteen seventy four, I don't know if there was an issue with the surveying or, or what happened, but it, uh, it's encroaching on the property, um, and the poles are also a few years old now, a few, one years old, and, um, this, these poles bring electricity out to the rear parking lot for lighting. Um, so they're gonna replace all three poles. When they do that, they, uh, what started this was, uh, Mrs. Victor, I wanted to follow, we've got our property, so it's gonna be moved going six feet, approximately six feet onto the, uh, property, which is one forty seven through one forty nine first tariff, the station ones, um, address, we, we call one forty nine first tariff, but it's actually too large to put together that was, that property was originally the, uh, Paul's company, you know, lumberyard, because of the real access. And then, and town got over it, so, point the seventy, they, they could go by it for this. So, it's just, we're going to an easement, uh, to move the pole onto, onto, um, uh, which allows the new pole, like, probably, seventy, one forty nine first tariff.
Yeah, along with the street.
Okay.
Motion.
Makes sense to me, I loved that.
Move the pole.
Yes, uh, Chief, can I ask you a question? Which property is this relative to all?
If you're facing the station, um, it's to the left, it's the whole left.
Oh, it's the other way, okay.
Yeah.
I was thinking of that, that kiosk that we, that was, right? This is the other side of.
Correct, yeah, yes, alright, okay, questions, yeah, I mean, sixty.
I have no question.
All right. Go for it.
Move that the Select Board grant an easement for the proposed installation and relocation of poles D thirty three dash thirty, P thirty three dash forty one, P thirty three dash sixty three, and detailed on easement schedule dated eight sixteen thousand twenty five, WR three one oh one four eight sixty.
Mr. Gilmore, seconded by, uh, Ms. Harrison, all in favor, aye.
Thank you, guys.
The Chellies.
What happened to the, the time of country way? One, one, one in the back of a country one.
No, what?
What was I reading?
I don't know.
There was one on country way. Was it from six?
There was one black, like.
No, no, no.
It's kind of true.
This was country way, like, rewatched country way, um, I swear about it, was reading it, it was like.
I don't know, this poll has been, this, this poll petition, this has been, uh, and ma- naturally, it's been a little all over the place with this, so it's been a little confusing.
Alright. Special town meeting, our.
So, this, um, the, the, the board, it isn't to make recommendations or anything, it's to decide if you wanna keep them on or keep them off. I think the first one you may have questions on would be the capital plan. The portable restaurants, this, I just thrown it on there because of the lead time, it can go to the radio capital, um, process, so pretend it's not there. Um, to suit his point about the I and I, we wanted to revisit it in the, um, fall, and if we had retained earnings, we do have retained earnings, so that's why the capital, um, particle is there. If you decide that you don't wanna revisit it, then there will be no capital laws.
I don't wanna revisit.
Oh, sorry.
No, I always wanna revisit.
Right, and this is, we're just putting, and we can extend, uh.
Yeah, it would just be that one project that, um, would be going to capital plan and then make the recommendations.
It's totally expensive.
Yeah. Um, transfers of reserves, unpaid bills, budget reconciliations, they would come back, if you wanna keep them on, they'll come back to you with recommendations. This is, uh, for the new members, I put together a list, and then from the list, I put together a draft more, um, just to get a feel for what's on it. And then it goes to, to all the different boards and committees to go find. Uh, the, what you have in community preservation, they have projects to break forward, so I assume you want to bring that, uh, article forward. Article six and article seven, which is the maintenance improvement protect the boat with bases, our Conservation Commission asked if the board would consider putting that article on, we had similar article a few years ago, and they've expended their funds.
Is there any way that could come from C P C?
It's maintenance.
I would say, no.
No.
And then article seven is the detailing, is. And then article seven is the desalinization technology study. That is coming from water resources, and they're asking if the board would consider, it not appear before you. But that doesn't mean you can't strike this article later, if you don't want to do it, just for now, I have a, that's a limit.
Yeah, maybe you can sell something.
I just want to get some strippers, we're just putting everything that we can, and then we can say. So we don't like it or whatever.
If you don't want to talk about it now, like, just don't want to talk about it. Take it off, you want to at least have your opportunity to talk about it and see if you want to go forward, you know.
I would say that. If we, if we took this off, if we took any of these off tonight, they don't come back for this fall.
They're done, they don't stop.
Right, and then later, you're right, later we could.
But you could say, hey, this is a good idea, but we want to put something in, you don't think it's special company, you know, if you want to do it.
You have the final chance. Still here, you would try to work us on a while. You can still move it, then you.
Yeah, correct.
The revolving fund limits are just to avoid you having to take that spring vote that we keep having to take. Uh, we don't, at least these two, um, funds will need to be changed. Uh, the tax title property, the two general bylaw amendments, they are going for bylaw review committee this Thursday, they are aware of them. Both of them are due to the change in statute, so our current law. Bylaw is inconsistent with the current law when it comes to tax title property. Uh, this was written by our tax title authority, the poll up, and. See what help bylaw review recommends from there, and then all these law, um. Is necessitating some changes to the animal control bylaw, and Kathy will be speaking to them, and possibly Craig. By then being the bylaw review committee this week, we're sure, yeah, and we'll see how that can forward. And then eleven was the special legislation for additional litter licenses. Uh, I wasn't, as you go through this and discuss it, you can tell me the numbers, um. I sent this out to camera council, but I really didn't give them a lot of time to turn around, so mind me, uh, since you asked me, might be correct. And then article twelve, make more to prove this, but the legislators never filed it, so.
The governor has to file. There's a whole group petition, uh, legislation either has to be approved by Tom V, or you have to request the governor to file. Took us seven months to get it to fight, like, get the license legislation, so this is gonna do that, just do it this way. Almost they put it on the municipal reform package.
So you already proved it once, so I'm.
Yeah.
Right, we're doing.
Well, that's just, that's a bit to me, I made it a high number because I know where you're gonna go, this is only my draft.
So we can, we can change it up.
Well, this one is a.
I want a hundred and five.
There you go.
One, one free shot.
The fact that the legislature keeps twelve, that is beyond me.
Oh.
It has made it. I think it's made it in the, well, House. Piece of legislation a couple times, um, it's never made it to the final bill, although the. Governor actually filed a couple years ago, and the useful monetization package stripped down the legislation.
It's that control thing.
Yeah, we can have a, when we discuss this, we have the legislation dependency, we can have a lot of this kind of, you might want to just not avoid this. Couple other changes we can talk about when we get to it.
Okay.
All right, so everyone to go for it again, we're just, this is like the most we can do, but.
Motion?
Motion, please, yes.
Move, move to include all articles submitted for the November third, two thousand twenty-five special town meeting.
Two more seconds, and then Ms. Harrison, all in favor.
Aye.
All right. Two days on the courts.
I have one.
Please.
I have one.
Oh, you're not, I didn't get one, I'm sorry.
Well, because we met, that I gave was.
Oh, yeah.
More than. Uh, two small notes, uh, for verification, as I mentioned earlier during the, uh. Committees, uh, set out verification commission this week, uh, there, as always, an excellent, uh, resource in looking for volunteers. People who will roll up their sleeves, get anybody's out there that wants to be involved in verification and pretty much every level, the circuit and the actual planting and cleaning and moving. Uh, they're brilled to, uh, activate the club help, um. They, uh, also had some feedback for me regarding a question I brought up about, uh. Plantings around the rec department, uh, old gates building. We circled that back to Jay Michael, and Jay Michael was called and sent the team out with intent to. Read one of the tools of gardens there by rec. And what ended up happening was they took two weed whackers and just demolished the whole thing. And left.
Did they cover the, look this one?
So, at some point, I think.
Did they cover the, would you like to learn on our.
Yeah.
They, they, they normally covered it down, but they just left a big pile of, this is, so, so I want to circle back.
That's interesting, because the council regions, we're seeing that they did such a great job on all their plantings, on their side.
And, and if you go on the other side, it looks beautiful, so, so I'm just, I plan to try to circle back and, and hopefully just have. A discussion with all parties involved to try and figure out who's doing a lot, and, and try to have better communication, so. I don't, I'm not, not a big deal, it's just one little section. But no, no, I want to make sure people understand what we're hoping for when we see the facts. That's my deal.
Jay Michael's the contractor that won the town bid for this lady, so landscaping.
Right.
It's just a community, it's more of a communication issue than it is, I think, so, so, I'll try to, approach that. Um, bylaw review is meeting Thursday night for a deeply discussed night, and I'll be sitting in on that. Um, and for chamber, we have them, I think, I think they did a great job this year, we could, uh, look forward to planning. You know, getting better things. That's it.
One.
Um, I have a little follow-up with, um. Um, the council of aging, they had, um. Two new members this summer, they got a twenty thousand dollar grant for their, they have a memory cafe that they do. Two or three days a week, so people with memory, oh, only forty dollars a day. Sounds like an incredible asset to the town. Um, they also have a program for people to pay out their tax debt. They're looking for dishwasher's kitchen help and some desk help. And, uh, we briefly did talk about the, um, potentials for renovations on that property. And they noted that they would like another, in a perfect world, thirty parking spaces, um. I have a really hard time getting people into park, I guess there's a valet. Who is sometimes helpful, but, um, they're very, very busy and maybe a more perfect. Uh, to add. I guess they could sometimes park down by the old schoolhouse, and sometimes the valet takes the car lower to central. Uh.
Hopefully, within the next five years, you'll have an additional hundred and twenty spaces over there.
Yep, a hundred and twenty, how, what the whole deal?
Because of the games reused, the games reused.
There's a hundred and twenty space in that land.
That's in the plan, well, it's in the sand, there's only sixty-three units, so, you know, a lot of those units won't have cars. So the, that's big, and that's important to me.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure I knew that number, what they were looking for, so I'm gazing to them, and.
Yeah.
Um, that's a huge project coming in front of us, um. But, um, yeah, we're, we're not even gonna go there. Um, the planning board approved two ABUs by rec the other night, um, they're working on. Changes to the water resource protection bylaw for the spring town meeting, that would mainly like a. A language, um, issue with the non-disturbance buffer zone that I've spoken about before. Um. We got that.
The, uh. Chandler has a strategic plan for the next five years. Interesting things about it, people love data, lots of great data, love the data, but.
I don't libraries that data, but I'm like.
It's, it's like, I don't think you earn sentimental, I love. The, uh, visits are up twenty-five percent over the last, uh, just two years alone, averaging ten percent growth. But the, the other point of that, our good, our good friends in Norwell, every time that they reduce their library hours. For any other town, there's your library hours, they're seeing them up, and they can do it on the, on the door, if they get them.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's, it's all interesting, great.
Norwell people, up to twenty-five percent.
Well, they're just Norwell folks, who we love.
That's one thing, I'm one of the, are you?
Yeah.
So we did, uh, we talked a lot about, oh, you were talking about landscaping, we planted a wildflower garden, wildflower. Uh, more of a like him a bunch.
That's right.
Yeah, but here's the funny thing, the only thing, we did a wildflower mixture, the only thing that grew is blackhead susans, and I have nothing to do with it.
That's stupid, thinking of.
So I was, I was like, oh, yeah, I remember, I was actually there on.
Like, it was a mix, we talked a mix.
And my wife goes, uh, she hadn't been up there yet, I go, check this out, I go, and she goes, she goes, wow, look at all those blackheads.
And Susan.
Literally.
I go, it's very funny, I go, and on the other side, it's gonna be done too, I guess, awesome.
Check, check the label on that tag, all right.
We, we, we're not, it's true, we've asked Chris Kennedy, we're like, look, this is what it shows, we'll see. And.
So there is one motion, there is.
Uh, a little correspondence tonight, there.
Yeah, you know, there is no correspondence.
Oh, sorry, I saw nets.
Yeah. Move to accept the selective minutes for August, this two thousand twenty-five, and August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, and further move. Accept and not release executive session meeting minutes for August twelve, two thousand twenty-five.
If you want to say, but Ms. Harrison, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Fancy, they're gonna have three. So. We're gonna go into executive session, so that, yes.
With regards to the open section at the beginning, uh, I didn't actually catch the gentleman's name from, I don't know, Citrofle's, who came in.
Kyle.
Kyle.
Yeah. So I, I don't know the typical protocol for, if we have, do we put this under extended or new business, or, I, I had a question, I don't know what he came to say tonight. Do we have another agenda?
Yeah, I'll have to put it on, yeah.
I, I just simply, he brought up two points, one about, um, putting a resident meeting on the agenda, I'm not sure. We've already had an offer to have an offsite meeting at location, I think that that would be probably more minimal. Me personally, the second was to relocate the sign to get a secondary point of data, I don't actually see a problem with that, I think it might be. A compromise that we can meet with the residents up there to try and help them to show where we're all coming from. And I don't know if that's something you could agree without, just talking to the chief, without having to figure it out.
I'll talk to Chief Thompson, they're from the set list, they put it before, so I just don't know if we need it.
I don't know this in a field of anything, I'm, I'm sure of, I'm sure guessing, sure guessing it's going to.
We're just all on data, so.
I, I hope it changes data, I think it will.
I don't think it will, but something that's amended to the residents and shows them that we're making a good faith effort to come to the best resolution, I think, has to, you know, simply.
So.
Yeah.
Move the sign two hundred yards or four hundred yards and reach.
Yeah, yeah, I think, well, I think.
That was a lot of data, it was ninety-six percent.
Yeah, again, so this is not, it's not on the agenda, or, or not necessarily time, but, but, uh, this is what we will also review, there's additional. Data or information that, uh, we don't all have, and, yeah, so we can, I think, all that information, so people have it, and we'll make a proper.
Yeah, but I.
I get, no, I get your point, but.
I did know the proper, but I'll check and see.
Okay. The shellfish aquaculture, the chair declares that the select board move into executive session, pursuant to purpose. Three, the open meeting law to discuss strategy and respect of litigation, and declared in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the select board in connection with this matter, shellfish. Number two, to review executive session minutes identified below, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, uh, subsection A three relating matters in litigation. And Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, twenty-two CG two. Uh, August twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, April fourteen, twenty twenty-four, July nine, twenty twenty-four. January first, twenty twenty-five, February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, April eighth, twenty twenty-five, April twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Further move that select board go into executive session pursuant to purpose three, the open meeting law to discuss strategy and respect of litigation and shellfish aquaculture, and that open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the select board. In connection with this matter, review executive session minutes, session meeting minutes, excuse me, in accordance with Mass General Law. Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, eighth, relating matters in litigation, and Mass General Law, C thirty-eight, twenty-two CG two. The board will not reconvene in open session. This vote requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Goodwich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
And Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Alton Seiko?
Digo. Yes.
Niko? Ms. Sladeau?
Yes.
Thank you, and all in favor?